We'll call the December, excuse me, call the December eighteenth City Council meeting. Order, Commissioner Smith, if you give us the prayer pledge and fact of the day, please, sir.
I father become once again thankful for the many gifts and blessings you have bestowed upon us. Thank for this opportunity to continue to serve the services of this city. We ask for a blessing upon all those in present and ask for a blessing upon this meeting that all shall we, all that we shall say and do will be pleasing and accepted in your sight. And thus in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fact of the day, near Kitty Hawk, North Carolina, Orville and Whipright made the first successful flight in history of a propelled, self-propelled heavier than aircraft on December the seventeenth, nineteen oh three. Orville Apollo gasoline-powered, propeller-driven biplane, which stayed afloat for twelve seconds and covered a hundred twenty feet in its in order of flight. Fact of the day.
All right, let me read the decorum statement for everyone. Welcome to the public meeting of the City Council of the City of Apopka. I don't know what to tell you. It's, it's on. Okay. Please turn off all cell phones and set them to silent. The City Council permits and encourages input and comments by members of the public on all matters which may come before the Council for action. If you wish to address the Council this afternoon evening, please make sure you have filled out a card with your contact information and have presented it to the clerk. When called upon, please proceed to the podium and speak clearly into the microphone, stating your name, address of record, organization if any, and direct your comments to the City Council and not to individual commissioners, staff, or members of the public. The Council and the City staff encourages constructive criticism, however, personal attacks are prohibited. Please observe general rules of decorum and civility. Speakers and members of the audience shall refrain from rude or derogatory remarks, shouting, disruptions, reflections as to integrity, slander, abusive comments, profanity, vulgarities, and statements as to personalities. Any violation of these provisions may result in the issuance of verbal warnings, including warning for trespass. If violations persist after such warnings, violators may be removed from the Council chambers. Okay, we got some minutes, looking for a motion to approve the minutes?
I, I did ask for the minutes to be revised.
Okay.
For some context that I felt was not included. So I believe that they will be included so we can bring them back at the next meeting, which would be January fifteenth. And I did send the email on Monday morning, addressed to the City Clerk and to the Chief Administrator.
Okay.
And did detail what I felt was, uh, missing.
Okay, okay, all right. Jacob, any changes to the agenda?
Yeah, we'll just have an additional presentation after the parade awards by Chief McKinley.
Okay, awesome.
Do we need to table the minutes? Do we need to officially table this?
Do we need a motion to table the minutes?
If that's what you intend to do, yes.
Okay, motion to table amendments?
Motion, so.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Velasquez, second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries now. Okay, Lorena Potter, come on up. Or Eric Mock, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. My name is Eric Mock, I'm the President-elect of the Follage Surtoma Club of Apopka. Tonight with me is John Clorn, who's the Sergeant-at-Arms, and Lorena Potter is the past president and the Parade Director, Chairperson for, for the parade. I've got a couple of things that I just want to point out this evening as bullet points in regards to the parade and then call the people up that won awards for the parade this year. This year is the fiftieth year that the Follage Surtoma Club of Apopka has been in place. It is the forty-eighth year that the Follage Club, Surtoma Club of Apopka has put on the Christmas Parade here in Apopka. There were roughly twenty-plus volunteers that put in excess of a thousand hours over a span of five to six months to prepare for this event and execute the parade. The parade is not a fundraiser, it is a way for the Surtoma Club to get back to the community. The parade itself is self-funded by entry fees and that the entry fees pay for the expenses that it takes to put on the parade. There were ninety-three entries this year, there were eighteen school entries from eight different schools in the local Apopka area. Four high school marching bands and one bagpipe band, five church entries, seven scout entries, including the Boy Scouts, Club Scouts, Girl Scouts, and American Heritage Girls. There were thirteen nonprofit and civic groups represented, six dance schools and dance teams, and seventeen businesses. The, the Follage Surtoma Club of Apopka wants to thank the City of Apopka, Mayor, Commissioners, the police, the fire department, streets, grounds, and recreation for all the work that all of them put in. So, and give them a hand. Now I'll go on with the awards as I call your name and affiliation, if you'd please come up. Lorena and, and John will give the award. Best band, Apopka High School Blue Dartre Marching Band, their director, Jeremy Langford. We'll get that award to them. The best float is the Apopka Elementary School National Honor Society and Safety Patrols. Best of theme, A Golden Christmas in Apopka, Trinity Baptist Church. Best marching or performing was the Apopka Dance Center. Most creative, the Apopka Women's Club. In special recognition, Margaret Corey and Johnny. So if you all were at the parade, Johnny is a very large Great Dane, um, black with white, or white with black spots. If I'm not mistaken, he was dressed up as a rocking reindeer with antlers. And friends, Barb Peters and Mickey, Mickey was the, Mikey, excuse me, the Chihuahua that was dressed up as a Christmas present. Some were running around, Johnny. So, so here's the group and the people that won the awards, thanks.
We'll, we'll go down and get a picture with everybody?
Sure.
All right, I just, I wanted to, I needed to add this presentation, we, I know there's been some, some controversy about the SRO program. And so I wanted to have Chief McKinley come forward and kind of explain kind of position that the, the five cities have taken here in Orange County. And so just thought it'd be worthy of him coming forward and kind of giving us the, the update. So Chief McKinley.
Mayor, Commissioners, I've been asked to speak tonight regarding the status of our school resource officers in our schools. First, I want to publicly address the emails sent out by Orange County Public Schools to parents following the tragic events in Wisconsin. This communication was not only disappointing but disingenuous. Exploiting the loss of innocent lives to advance their agenda and garner community support is both unacceptable and inappropriate. Although I have kept each of you informed throughout our efforts to negotiate a contract, I want, want to make one point abundantly clear to our residents. At no time has the Apopka Police Department suggested or attempted to remove SROs from our schools. The idea of replacing SROs with guardians is entirely an Orange County Public School initiative. The Apopka Police Department has maintained an unwavering commitment to the safety of our students and schools. In fact, when the law changed to mandate either an SRO or guardian be in every public school, we were the first agency in Orange County to assist the school board in meeting this requirement. It's unfortunate that Orange County Public Schools has chosen to engage in political games while refusing to adequately fund the essential services we provide to their schools. Let me be clear, the responsibility for school safety lies with the Orange County Public Schools under Florida statutes. We assist them in fulfilling this mandate by providing SROs to our schools. If Orange County Public Schools had invested as much energy in resolving this matter as they have in applying political pressure on our chiefs and elected officials, we might have reached a resolution by now. Despite these challenges, we successfully negotiated a one-year contract for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year to continue providing SROs to all public schools in the City of Apopka. Throughout this school year, even without a contract in place for several months, we did not pull our SROs from their assignments. Orange County Public Schools, however, insisted on a three-year agreement during negotiations. Why? The answer is clear, under the previous three-year agreement, the cost of our SRO program rose by forty-five percent totaling over one point six million dollars. Currently, due to rising salaries, healthcare costs, and equipment expenses, the program's costs have increased to over one point seven million dollars, yet we are only receiving fifty-four percent reimbursement for these expenses. Orange County Public Schools prefers three-year agreements because they allow the school board to avoid absorbing the increasing cost over time. This is evidenced in their recent negotiations. Despite a forty-five percent increase in cost over the last three-year contract, Orange County Public Schools offered only a twenty percent increase for the first year of the new contract. To resolve this matter for the current school year, we reluctantly accepted their offer of seventy-two thousand dollars per SRO, which left us covering twenty-five, a twenty-five percent deficit incurred during the last three-year agreement. For the second year of the proposed contract, Orange County Public Schools offered seventy-three thousand dollars per SRO, a mere one point four percent increase over the year one. For the third year, they proposed seventy-five thousand dollars per SRO, a two point seven percent increase over two years, over the year two. Over the three years, the proposal equates to a total increase of four point two percent. Based on historical trends, we know our program costs will rise approximately five percent annually due to raises and more, amounting to a minimum ten percent increase over three years. This would leave us facing a deficit of at least seven point three percent in addition to the twenty-five percent increase we have absorbed from the last three-year agreement. In addition to the basic costs, which are not fully covered by Orange County Public Schools' contract, each law enforcement agency spends a significant amount of additional time and resources completing criminal investigations as well as active threat investigations in the schools despite the Orange County Public Schools' funds, their pre, funds their own police department. And I will tell you that one of our SROs is out right now on overtime, tracking down a threat to Apopka Memorial, so, and we're paying that expense. Our SROs respond out regardless of the time of day or night to follow up on threats received towards our schools. Our detectives investigate the crimes that occur in our schools. If this trend continues and we are forced to absorb these deficits, the SRO program will become unsustainable. Additionally, when something happens in our schools, we are the ones in the media, not Orange County Public Schools. When we place our SROs in the schools, we are assuming all risk and liability associated with all the events that occur in that school. I want to emphasize once again that my priority always, has always been and will always remain, the safety of our students and our community. This has never been about money, it's about securing the resources necessary and being physically responsible to continue providing the high standard of safety and service that our schools deserve. In closing, I want our community to know, I remain committed to ensuring the safety of our students and schools and to negotiating a fair agreement that reflects the true cost of these critical services. I want to thank you for your time and I'll answer any questions that you have.
Any questions, Chief?
And you just articulate, how many SROs are in our city right now?
We have eleven. Yes, ma'am. We have three at the high school and one in each one of the middle schools and elementary schools.
I just wanted, I'll let the Council know, I, I've sent a letter, or excuse me, email and a letter to the two policy chairs in the House and the two Senate, um, policy chairs and, um, and budget chairs for the legislature as they come into the session about us, you know, being, being funded because of the new rule that came out in two thousand eighteen, adding the two additional officers for the, because what they used to have is, is one, one officer, one SRO rotating between three elementaries, now it's one per. And so they haven't increased the funding, so we've, we've sent a letter to ask the, the state legislature to help fund them appropriately. And if, if need be, we'd love, we would, we would be happy to take over the program entirely and take on, as Chief said, you know, let's, let's, you know, if we're going to fund it, let us fund, fund the municipalities and their, you know, their officers who are out there every day to fund the, the program appropriately. So anyway, I've, I've sent those, those letters out to the four chairmen, those, the, those committees and, and hopefully, uh, we'll, we'll get some, you know, some, some resolution here in the next legislative session.
Would you send that letter to each of us so that we have?
Yeah, we're gonna need copies of those, are, are names on those letters? Okay. And then, so in, Chief, thank you for your time up here. What I want to make clear on, I'll, specific to my seat in my front, we have discussed it, and more so you've updated me verbally, but we've never, I've never been consulted to say, Commissioner Nesta, what do you think, how should we progress, things like that. So I want to make sure that's clear that this was not a me decision, I've not been part of these negotiations, I'm, I, I won't speak to anybody else up here. But for me, that has not been something that I've done. So any decision that had been made is not exclusive to my seat or my role. And in that, the letter that was sent out between Apopka, Akoi, Windermere, and Winter Garden, Winter Park, who wrote this letter?
All the chiefs and their mayors and city administrators, it was a collective endeavor. I want to make it clear that these endeavors are not Mike McKinley, as has been pointed out in the media. When we started negotiations, the small agencies selected me to be their representative, so we had one spokesman. Uh, therefore, I seem to be the eye of the media. But I have not made any decisions, nor have I brought anything forward to the school board without the approval of all the chiefs and their city. And so far, all the cities, the chiefs, the mayors have been steadfast in our commitment to resolving this matter, but also to make sure that we resolve it in a financially or physically responsible manner.
Okay, and I understand that as well. What I want to make clear, at least from my perspective, and again, because I've not been consulted or, or.
I didn't, I, if you felt that I insinuated that, I didn't, but I have kept you all up on things that I've sent out or that have been sent out on us, I have emailed to each one of you, but I,
I understand.
I was not trying to insinuate that I'm going to each commissioner and saying, hey, is this amount okay or anything else? Um, I think that's what I get paid for to make sure.
I just want to make sure that's clear that it hasn't been.
Reimbursed properly and that I'm being physically responsible to my community.
And I understand that, and one thing, the, the biggest point as well, and you made the, a, a, a statement of that at some point this may become unsustainable for us. This comes down to, it's similar to what the fire department has gone through, things like that, it all comes down to money. We need to pay whatever we need to pay to make sure our children are safe, which we are doing right now. I want to make sure we never change that, regardless of what OCPS does, regardless of what other decisions are, politics, we need to stay in the schools no matter what. So whatever that is, let us figure out how to fund it properly, we need to make sure our kids are safe with that. So I just want to make sure that is a clear point.
As I stated, I at no time have I ever said we're going to pull our SROs out of the school. But I feel like for our community, I have a responsibility to try and negotiate the best contract in the best interest. We have to realize that our residents are paying the mileage rate for the school board, they're paying the one cent tax that was just approved, and they're supplementing all that with city taxes for the SRO program. So they're paying three times what county residents are paying for their SRO program. You know, I'm not debating and by no means have I ever said that we're going to abandon our schools. I have no intention of abandoning our schools, but I'm in a position that you all pay me to be in to try to negotiate the best contract that I can for our community, ensuring that our schools are safe. You know, we've invested a lot of money in, in equipment, uh, we review every school shooting to see what lessons may be learned from that. As a result of the one in Texas at the elementary school, we've implemented, uh, entry tools in every one of our schools, so we don't have to sit there and try to decide whether a door is open or not. We're gonna open, you know, every one of our officers are trained, have been trained on a door, we purchased a door to train them on how to use those entry tools and everything else. We're doing everything we can to protect our students, and that is priority number one to me. It has been since day one, and like I said, the school board will tell you that I go above and beyond making sure that our schools are safe. You know, they can't deny that, I participate with everything. And I'm gonna maintain that our schools will be the safest, that we can make them, we will have our SROs in the school as long as I can, but at the same time, alls I'm trying to do is be physically responsible to this council, our citizens. Our citizens incurred a tax increase, an increase in water, an increase in everything else. Should they be paying taxes that they're already paying in addition to that? I think I have a responsibility to try to make that as minimal as I can.
And I'll disagree with that, it's, and I, I think we're on the same page on that front, so let's mitigate costs, but by no means do we sacrifice what we're doing for our children here, so that's it, thank you.
I never will, that's my commitment to our parents, it always has been. You know, I've had kids go through the schools, I understand that safety is a priority, safety is a priority to me.
And you and I, we've had conversations, you have kept us updated with what you're doing. And I've told you before that I support what you're doing. And I would just encourage our residents to go to the school board meeting and make the same request to them that they're making of us. I think that's the only thing.
Mr. Anderson?
Uh, Chief McKinley, you have definitely kept us updated with emails as well and, um, keep, uh, supporting our residents and ensuring that, uh, that the cost is not passed on, the burden is passed on to our residents. And, uh, we did hire you and entrusting you to negotiate what's the best interest of our city, the students, and I know that you're doing that, so we're here in support.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief, thanks for what you're doing for us, appreciate you. Okay, next up, we've got nine consent agenda items, anybody need to have any of those pulled, if not, look for a motion to approve.
I just want to pull, number nine, I just want to have a quick discussion on.
Okay, look for a motion to approve, uh, consent agenda items one through eight. Some, got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries now. Uh, City of Apopka Blatch, come on down, I guess, Mr. Nesta's got questions?
Mr. Sherman, I appreciate that, and this is something we discussed in my agenda review as well, and it's specific to overtime and the percentages in each and every department, it's not just one specific department, it's not police or fire, it's all of them. And we are over on overtime, some departments over a hundred percent of what we budgeted.
Correct, yeah, we're trending pretty high for the first two months. And as I mentioned in our briefing, we still in the middle of year end, so there are some adjustments that may reduce some of those amounts. But we are gonna continue to monitor overtime and look at it per month based on budget and then come back to see if we need to make some adjustments. But right now, the numbers that we have, they may be adjusted now.
So are we using, are we basing overtime that we budget for on last year's overtime calculations and then creating some type of increase year over year?
When we budgeted overtime for this year, we did go and look at FY twenty-four up to date, we did. And we did make some decisions based on that, but we also added new staff, you know, some new positions that was supposed to compensate for some of that overtime.
Okay, so we are seeing an increase that we're budgeting, so I just want to make sure that we're budgeting upfront correctly so that, you, you know, that my least favorite thing is budget amendment. So if we can make sure we're getting it right upfront and budgeting properly, making sure that our departments have what they need, then we won't have these budget amendments moving forward.
Correct, understand.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, look for a motion to approve the FY twenty-twenty-four budget actual for the two months ending November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Nesta?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries now. All right. Interim Chief Sanchez, come on down. And, uh, boy, I tell you, I was looking over his, uh, his resume, I'm like, man, chief, this is like six font. I, I, I can barely read it even with my glasses on, but, uh, anyway, I just wanted to give everybody, you know, a little sense of, you know, what, what he's accomplished in his years here at the, the city. And, uh, and, you know, we, we go back, it's, it's interesting, you know, we had to eliminate the Volunteer Firefighter Academy because of, of the cancer, um, issues that, that firefighters face. And so anyway, but back in the day, uh, in October of two thousand seven, chief, interim chief came on as a volunteer firefighter, EMT. He moved on in, uh, December of two thousand seven, on to firefighter EMT, then on to became a lieutenant, a public education officer on May sixteenth, two thousand fifteen, moved up to captain of public education, community risk reduction officer, public information officer from two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen. Became a captain of emergency medical services coordinator EMS training in two thousand sixteen, division chief, emergency medical services in two thousand twenty, twenty twenty-three. And I just want to give you my, you know, the. And I just want to give you my, you know, the, the, where I, my, my biggest interaction with the interim chief was that um we were having a real problem with our EMS billing company. We're getting, we weren't getting near the amount of revenue in that we should have been getting. And, and I, I asked the interim chief, I said, hey, can you take a look at this? As the EMS coordinator says, we've got to be, there's got to be a better solution to this. We're, seems like we're not, you know, not receiving the, the revenue we should be getting. And man, he got into that. It was, it was, it was a can of worms, as I, I think he would tell you. And, and uh come to find out, yeah, we, we needed to, to make a, a change. And when the change, and we're now probably with some additional add-ons that he's been able to accomplish. We've probably added a million, two million, three dollars in revenue from our EMS billing. So for the ambulance rides, because of some of the requirements the fed, the feds put on us, um and, and making sure that we're billing at the right, the right rate. Uh, he's able to increase our revenue for the city by one point two million, one point three million dollars. All, a lot in part to his, his effort. So not only is he good with the, with the, the, the folks, because you can see them all, they're all here tonight, but also good with the numbers. And so it's, it's, it's not only a people job, but it's also a numbers job. And, and you've shown your, you know, your metal in, in both. And so uh could be more proud than to, to nominate you for our, our fire chief. And so before we do that, I'll look for any comments and then we'll, we'll, we'll make the motion to.
Well, just to give him the praise that, you know, he's uh in, in all the time that I have been here as an elected official, he has always worked over and above and always making sure to, you know, to make sure that the department was uh working and, and you've actually in the last few months have brought the morale up for the fire department. And that's been a, a big accomplishment.
Thank you.
Uh with you at the head. And I see it. I see it in all these members that are here to support you today. So for that, I congratulate you. That was something that was very important following, uh sadly, you know, we all had a very dark time in the fire department with the death of one of our firefighters. And uh it was very hard to navigate through it, but you, you you stayed on and you made sure to bring the morale up for that fire department, give them the confidence and the hope that we were moving forward and that things would get better for training and with the leadership. So with that, I thank you. And I see it and it just gives me a lot of pride and I wanted to see all the firefighters here supporting you as we do. So congratulations.
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah. So I'm new to the council and witnessing from the time I've actually been here and just watching how the morale of the fire department has increased in is, is very, very touching to see the impact that you actually had on the, on that community. And um you have my full support. Um, I've been sitting back watching you. Um, you, every meeting, you're always professional. You're always ready. You're always on time. And um we're, we're excited to have you here. So.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, uh, I, we've had conversations before and I always told you that, you know, I appreciate all that you do. And I've always noticed that you've always done your job with professionalism. And uh even as the mayor said, when you went back to look at all the building and you dug in and you didn't hesitate. Uh, and you came forth and you've proven that you're capable of doing the job. And we're just looking forward to the great things that are yet to come. So congratulations.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Nesta?
Chief Sanchez. Congratulations. I'm, I'm so excited that you're in this position. It's been clear that you've built confidence within your department and in that it's built confidence in us and in our residents. You've taken what was uh a dark cloud on our department and on our city and, and really transformed it and made it your own. You create such efficiencies and such creative ways to problem solve throughout your interim uh position as well as moving forward. I look forward to working with you. And, and it's very cool to see what you've done. Your leadership is unmatched. And uh whatever we can do to continue to support you, let us know.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Well, look for a motion to appoint Wilfredo Rivera Sanchez as our new Apopka Fire Chief.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Mayor Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to serve as our twenty-third fire chief of an incredible fire department filled with brave men and women who put their lives on the line every day. I am truly humbled to this disposition. To the residents of Apopka, I am honored to step into the role of fire chief. I am fully committed to leading the department whose mission is to save lives, to protect property through fire, EMS, and proactive fire prevention methods. When seconds count, you can count on us. To the dedicated members of Apopka Fire Department, I pledge to work hard for you and alongside you. I am here to support you. When I look around this room, I don't just see Apopka firefighters. I see members of a family. Together, we have faced some of the most difficult challenges of our careers, which have tested our strength, our hearts, and through it all, we have grown stronger and closer together. As we move forward, I commit to leading with unity and transparency. I am honored to stand alongside you as we work together to create a stronger, brighter future for our department. Thank you.
All right. Next up, school board sewer credit meter agreement.
All right. Mayor Commissioner Blanche Sherman, finance director. Can you hear me now?
You got, you got speaking.
Okay.
Speak up.
In, all right. In December of twenty twenty-two, the city entered into a sewer credit agreement with Orange County Public Schools on behalf of Apopka High School. The sewer credit agreement allows the customer to receive a credit for the amount of liquid included in their sewer consumption. This program has been a success for Orange County Public Schools and therefore they want to implement another system at Piedmont Lakes Middle School. Before you is the agreement for Piedmont Lake um Middle School. So what I'm requesting tonight is your approval of that agreement.
Any questions for Blanche?
No, again, we discussed this in interview. It's just to restate that this is something Apopka High School already does. So it's mimicking that same concept for Piedmont Lakes Middle School.
Correct.
Okay. Understood. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for motion to approve the sewer credit meter agreement with the school board of Orange County for, didn't say what's the uh for.
Piedmont Lake.
Piedmont Lakes Memorial Middle School. Yeah. Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, execution of a piggyback contract with Axon.
Yes. Chief McKinley is gonna come up and explain the details.
He was trying to get, make me keep that on the consent agenda. Yeah, yes, I guess. It's just, it's just such a big number. I said, chief, we need to pull off consent and at least so if anybody has a question about it.
Yeah.
I know you saved me a million bucks, but still.
Well, I, I can't tell you I'm happy about this one either. Um, you know, but um I, I think it's in our, our best interests and again, trying to be physically responsible. I met with each one of you and um answered your questions at the time, but there may be other ones since that meeting. So I was asked us to do an overview of everything. So Mayor Commissioners, I am presenting a proposal tonight to renew our contract with Axon Incorporated. The company that provides our body worn cameras and tasers. We are currently two and a half years into a five-year contract. Since its inception, Axon has acquired Fusis, the software that powers our life crime center and partners with Skydio, our drone manufacturer to store video and flight data. Over the past three years, we have entered several additional, entered into several additional agreements with Axon due to personnel growth and the corresponding need for more equipment. Currently, our contract covers one hundred and twenty-four body worn cameras and tasers, but our department has authorized one hundred and forty-two positions, worn positions. A number that has increased recently due to higher, higher hiring rates. As you know, we've been swearing at quite a few people lately. And so we are just about over that hundred and twenty-four number and we're in need to buy more body cameras and tasers as well as some of the licenses that go with them. Um consequently, we've been purchasing new equipment at today's prices rather than the originally contracted rates as our current contract did not account for growth. After discussion with Axon, we identified the need to consolidate our contracts into a new agreement that incorporates all existing products, locks in today's pricing and accounts for future growth. Additionally, we explored new Axon products that could enhance the level of service we provide to our community. The proposed renewal will utilize a source well contract framework. The agreement includes purchasing one hundred and fifty body worn cameras, camera fours and taser tens, covering our current needs and providing spare units. It also anticipates growth by including five additional cameras and tasers per year for the remaining four years of the contract, locking in the pricing for up to a twenty additional units at today's price. Some of the new features and improvements, the body worn camera four, it includes a watch me button now, allowing officers to signal their supervisors for real-time monitoring. That becomes an officer safety thing. If they're on a call, they're not comfortable, they can't talk on the radio, they can push this button on the camera and it sends a signal to their supervisors that they want to be watched until their backup can get there. Uh enhanced thirteen-hour battery life to accommodate our new twelve-hour shifts. Bidirectional communications for hands-free interaction with dispatch supervisors, translators or mental health professionals. So they can use the camera to do two-way communication. Uh sometimes we don't have a, a Spanish speaker on scene. We use a uh language line for whatever language we need to speak. They can do that through their cameras and uh go from there. The taser ten, it emits an audible sound upon activation to aid in de-escalation. Increased effective range of forty feet compared to the current twenty-one feet. Eliminates electrical sparks, reducing the risk of igniting flammable materials or gases. The proposed contact contract also locks in the pricing for Fusis and our drone platform. Currently Fusis costs us sixty-five thousand dollars annually and was set the increase at a hundred to a hundred and ten thousand dollars next year. Through negotiations, we secured a rate of seventy thousand dollars per year for the contract's duration, including additional data cores at no additional cost. Additional benefits of the contract, we're going to receive six virtual reality headsets and tablets for advanced training and de-escalation, crisis intervention and use of four scenarios. Those head, headsets allow us to do virtual reality training with scenarios that are created by Axon for the life of the contract. We'll get all new scenarios that they create. Um that's for the young guys. That's where, you know, training in every field, I think, is headed towards virtual reality. Uh so it'll take us to the next level of training. It also includes draft one, an AI-powered report writing tool that generates drafts from body camera recordings. This feature is offered at a discount and can be canceled at any time without penalty. Um, there are numerous uh agencies around us that have gone to draft one, uh mostly the sheriff's offices. Orange County is currently trialing it. Um, it's something I haven't, we're not real familiar with. So we are creating a trial and they did add in the contract that we can, that I can cancel that at any time if we choose not to use that product and we will not be charged for it. We're also getting tools for supervisors to conduct quality assurance, reviews of body worn camera footage, unlimited data storage for Axon products and third-party, party video evidence, eliminating the need for IT to purchase and maintain additional storage infrastructure. Our current, excuse me, five-year contract totals one point three million dollars with two and a half years remaining. While we could continue with the existing agreement, our significant growth and anticipated future needs, excuse me, make this new contract more cost-effective. The proposed five-year contract totals four point one million dollars, though it represents a notable increase. Axon's average annual increases are five percent or more and our department's growth mean renewing the con, current contract later would exceed approximately five million dollars. To ease the financial burden, Axon has agreed to accept our current budget allocation for this fiscal year and spread the remaining first year cost over the next four years. I believe this proposal positions us to meet our operational needs, enhance our capabilities and responsibly manage costs over the next five years. I'm happy to address any questions that you have.
Okay. Any questions for chief? I know you, everybody's been briefed on it. I just, but I just thought it was, you need to bring it forward to the, the whole council. So we've got a record of it.
He did. He, he briefed us all. And uh we asked a couple of questions, a few questions actually. Um, and I'll just make this statement. It's, it's law enforcement nationwide has to keep growing, keep moving forward. Technology and, and um just addressing many of the threats that we have and we face and we have to have a police department that's ready to, to deal with it.
Well, and one of the things I didn't mention, I, I think I explained to y'all, um they are the major player in this space, just like Motorola is a major player in our radios. And that's where you have to go. There's a lot of interconnectivity between our body camera and taser through Axon that if we switch to another body camera, it's not going to have the functionality that our current. There's a lot of interconnectivity between our body camera and taser through Axon that if we switch to another body camera, it's not gonna have the functionality that our current thing, body cameras have with our tasers. If we draw our taser, our body camera automatically comes on and it's not on. If we draw, draw our firearm, our camera automatically comes on. We're carrying the same equipment that the Orange County Sheriff's Office is, so if we're on a call with them and those switches in the bottom of our holster, our taser holster are triggered, everybody's body camera comes on. So, you know, there is an advantage to being on the same platform that everybody else is. We also continue to get evidence.com which manages all of our cases, it has automatic, you know, when they enter a case into evidence.com, it's flagged for the retention policy automatically, we don't have to worry about making sure that they're doing it. There's a lot of other advantages that, you know, we went over the first time we went to the contract that I haven't covered, but there's a significant amount of other benefits to the contractor to using the Axon platform. I wish I could tell you that there was another taser maker out there, but they really are the only game with that.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
I had a couple of quick questions and a couple of comments, so we're at, the new contract's 4.1 million over five years.
Yes, sir.
And then we had budgeted 1.3 over the next two effectively?
No, that was a total contract, we budgeted $402,000. That covers all of our Axon contracts that we currently have, the one for the drone, the one for Fusis and the one for the body camera and tasers.
Okay, all right, so let's see that. The comments is just, I really like that we're implementing virtual reality VR, I think that's gonna be huge for us and staying on the cutting edge of technology for our department, I think is gonna help with recruiting and retaining as well as, it's gonna increase our safety for our officers and our residents, so it is an increase, a pretty sizable increase, but it's needed and I think again, it helps us compete with other municipalities as well to make sure that recruiting, getting the best of the best.
And it does, and you know, I have to thank all of you all because one of our recruiting tools is, is, you know, we have a very good fleet of cars. Our cars are in great shape thanks to your support every budget year and our cycling through the cars at the appropriate times. We try to be physically responsible, make sure we've got all the mileage out of them, that we can get them for a pursuit law enforcement vehicle. But also part of our recruiting is that we have some of the best equipment and cutting-edge equipment in the state. I think that along with our ability that you all provided to us to sponsor people through the police academy has enabled the significant growth we've seen, you know, in February, we got seven coming out of the academy. I think we got four or five getting ready to go into the March academy, so we are getting those numbers and we're getting the numbers up. Unfortunately, I have three retiring in January, one, two in January and one in February, so we gotta overcome those, but they're at the end of their careers and we understand that and we have to apply, you know, prepare for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter?
Leroy Bell, Mod Helen of Popka. This last segment, the representative from the police department just stood before you guys and spoke about the safety of our kids, the citizens, the top-notch job that they're doing. Now, we're talking about these cameras that go on the police. I just want to remind y'all, this money that you're paying for these cameras is not coming from a grant. It coming from the same place where you getting paid from, from the taxpayer dollars. Talking about these great cameras and all this, it's coming from the taxpayer dollars, so the taxpayers need to see the product. It's not only just for the police to wear around, that he can get real time this, that, this, that and another. It should be where that the citizen can see what they're paying for. If they're paying for something that's legit, like a police officer sitting over in that corner over there, a young man that I met, a young man that I admire. A young man that I think are straight up guy. But everybody's not the same. And it should be that if each and every one of you can get out, collect taxpayer dollars as a salary and you can see the product of these cameras, I should be able to see the work, the product of these cameras and I'm paying for it with my taxpayer dollars. Or it's only proper when you got the camera on and a police officer helping an old lady across the street, then I guess you're getting your money's worth. But then, I just guess collateral damage when our officer not like this young man get out and beat a, a citizen down after you been to tase them to death. I noticed that he, the representative of the police department just said about these new tasers that they don't burn as much. Like the, uh, video of the last one, we've been trying to see that the expert said that it wasn't anything wrong with it. How many times that that taser sparked fire when that young man was tased? If you're gonna do this, make sure you bake it in that we are able to see the product of this work. Then if we're not able to see the product of this work, it's no more than nothing than a boat anchor.
Anybody else from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve the piggyback contract for the signed terms for Axon Enterprise Inc. Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, ordinance number 3074.
Ordinance number 3074, in ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county rural to mixed use for certain real property owned by Timothy Birchfield, Robert and Stacy Moss, located west of Golden Gem Road, south of Nightshade Grove Lane and Sadler Road, comprising 19.76 acres more or less, providing for severability conflicts and ineffective date.
Any changes? Any questions? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to adopt ordinance number 3074. So, got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
It's nay. This is the one that I keep disapproving.
Okay, so we got, we got, so was that Commissioner Nestor, your note, okay, so this passes, ordinance number 3074 passes three votes to two. The two opposed were Commissioner Velazquez and Commissioner Nestor. Next up, ordinance number 3082.
Ordinance number 3082, in ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from RSF 1B residential single-family large lot to RTF residential two-family for property, property located at 1770 Sheeler Avenue, owned by Sheeler Development LLC, comprising 9.92 acres more or less, providing for severability conflicts and ineffective date.
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Amir Hamza, I'm a planner. This is the second reading for the 1770 Sheeler Avenue rezoning and it will be a rezoning from RSF 1B residential single-family a large lot to RTF residential two-family. A second reading for this item was held originally at the November 20th city council meeting, but it was anonymously tabled to today's city council meeting due to the issues in regards to the adjacent property, which is the police department gun range. Staff and applicant has met at the police department gun range site in the area where it is bordering the 1770 Sheeler Avenue site. Both staff and applicant have come up with a solution plan and the applicant is available, applicant is an attendance today for further discussions to answer any questions that Commissioners may have, thank you.
If the applicant will come forward?
So I just wanna kind of, I don't know if the developer, I met with the developer, he was at our, my agenda review anyway, with Chief McKinley and they both expressed support. As I told, and I, I'm sorry, can you please, I didn't ask for your name yesterday. I didn't hear you, can you repeat that?
Yeah, good evening, that is Itai. Good evening, that is Itai.
Okay, so just ex parte, just to disclose to the public that Mr.
Mr. Guy.
Was at, at my agenda review along with Chief McKinley and.
Also mine as well, I think all of ours.
I know he was at mine.
So can we do, explain what, what y'all came up, what the solution was?
Thank you.
Brent Lenzin with Kimley Horn, so since the last meeting, we were kind of tasked with meeting and coming up with a solution, not basically laying it out entirely, but let's brainstorm and figure out what's the best solution to protect the residents in the short term before the city has a future plan of relocating the gun range. So we met, Chief McKinley was nice enough with Richard, Amir and Bobby. We first met at the police station, but then the conversation turned into a field trip and we went out there and actually got to look at it and really put eyes on the situation, topography differences between the land. But ultimately, the solution we rose on was the adjacent piece of our development, we're able to manipulate grades to an extent. The gun range is sunken down quite a bit and with our site, we'll have the ability to reduce grade a little bit in this corner as well, which creates a natural topographic change in between the properties and by cutting down our property, we'll create some export fill, which we're gonna be able to utilize along that buffer, cause the gun range shoots north-south, we're immediately to the east. So what we'll be able to do is now build the berm that's on that eastern side to an appropriate height, we're gonna work with, we're getting into some crazy engineering, there's ballistics and everything with the ammunition that the, the city police department uses to understand the trajectory of a bullet should a misfire happen, to make sure that that's something that would hit the berm or go well past our proposed development. And that's something moving forward with the cross-sections and the details will be implemented at the MDP phase, which is coming up next.
Any, any questions for the applicant?
No, I just wanted to say, and I did meet with your team as well and I appreciate the time and the patience working with us, working through this, cause it was a concern, it was a resident concern as well of this, and so I appreciate that you guys did have the patience to work through it and become partners with us in that to make sure that their safety and that your project is successful as well, so thank you for that, I appreciate your patience and time in this.
Absolutely.
All right, anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for motion to adopt ordinance number.
Sylvester Hall, Apopka, Florida, just for the record, you know, I agree with moving forward, but I do think we should put a emphasis on getting the training center built yesterday, not down in the future, but yesterday, so we won't have to entertain any more things like this, thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Look for motion to adopt ordinance number 3082. Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3083.
Ordinance number 3083, in ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from mixed use to residential very low suburban for certain real property owned by Roseville Farms LLC, located north of Poncan Road, east of Poncan Pines Road and west of Basin Dwelly Parkway, comprising 28.44 acres more or less, providing for severability conflicts and ineffective date.
Any changes Bobby? Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter?
Good evening, Bill Mackey, 913 North Pennsylvania, Atwater Park, Florida. I'm a landscape architect and land planner with Daily Design Group and we are the applicants on this project. I would just like to reiterate that we are downzoning or downland use in this property from mixed use to RSV, to the very low residential, excuse me, due to the fact of where it's at, above north of the, north of Apopka Road and I believe west of Kelly Road, there's policies with joint plan area, no development of north of this road should be more than 220 years an acre. So I'd just like to reiterate that we are reducing the density for this property. I am here with Tina Demostine, Luke Classion and Pam Richardson as our team. We're here to answer any questions for you and ask for your support.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, all right, anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to adopt ordinance number 3083. Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioners Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3084.
Ordinance number 3084, in ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from MUESBT mixed-use gateway east shore to RSF 1B residential single-family large lot for certain real property owned by Roseville Farms LLC, generally located north of Poncan Road, east of Poncan Pines Road and west of Basin Dwelly Parkway, comprising 28.44 acres more or less, providing for severability conflicts and ineffective date.
Any changes Bobby? Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to adopt ordinance number 3084.
Again, so move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2025-04.
Resolution 2025-04, a resolution of the city council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024 and ending September 30, 2025, providing for a budget amendment.
Thank you, Blanche Sherman Finance Director, budget amendment number four, resolution number 202504. We have four items, the first one coming out of general fund operating reserves in an amount of 602,000. This is related to some additional expenses for Hurricane Milton, debris monitoring and grant administration with Thomas Consulting Services. This is the contract that you approved the previous meeting and you've approved it in the past. So we needed some additional funds to cover debris monitoring and grant administration in the amount of 301,000, but because it's a transfer, your total amount of the budget amendment is 602,000.
And that, that'll be, the goal is for that to be reimbursed, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Blanche?
Got four.
Oh, okay.
Number two. Okay, number two, this is, this is the critical one. This is the American Rescue Funds, we have to have those funds obligated contracted by the end of this calendar year. So we do have some more project savings and as I mentioned before, when I brought this before you, that we want to transfer or reallocate those funds to the street surface, resurface program and that's what we're doing, the amount of savings is 293,000. Again, this is a transfer, so you see a doubling of that amount, the amount of 587,337. The next item is related to Emerson Park subdivision special assessment that is underway. We got an estimate and a contract you just proved this evening with Brian Miller Olive, that's our bond counsel. That contract included work for the methodology consultant that we would need. The total amount was, what I did, they gave me a timeout.
You gotta go.
Only me, only me, anyway, it was 75,000 for Brian Miller Oliver and that includes the methodology consultant. I added another 75K so I don't have to come back, you know, to you for any additional cost that we may incur before we get to that point of financing.
And that one again.
And that was step nine from the last council meeting.
Well, now I'm probably in step ten. Cause step nine was when you approved the resolution we had last.
This is the next step.
Next step, yes ma'am.
And this will be reimbursed as well?
Yes, coming out of the special assessment.
Okay.
And so the final item, we did receive a $20,000 grant from Duke to support the strategic plan that we have underway and you just approved that contract at your last meeting. So we're trying to move forward with that process, Jacob is working on that. So I want to move these funds for, we did receive the grant funds in September, but I need to bring them into the current year.
Okay, any questions for Blanche? Anybody from the public wish to speak?
Leroy Bell of Apopka, I just have a question, it's troubling to me that with this presentation that I heard Ms. Blanche just said, uh, well, it was a hun, it was, I think it was 150 and she told Commissioner Nestor, "Well, I just added another 75 to it, so I won't have to come back to you." I don't understand. Can I get an answer? Well, I, I, I would like for her to answer that because last meeting. because last meeting, I think the city manager had spoke about, we didn't, we don't need to ask any question. They won't answer a question. We need to submit them. But then last midnight, a man, oh, okay. Well, a man came up and asked a question and you allowed him to ask you. Yeah, you can ask me questions. So I'd like to get my question answered.
Thank you.
The additional seventy-five K, this is something, we're implementing a special assessment for Emerson Park Subdivision. There's going to be costs associated with that. One cost is known, the seventy-five thousand I know about. There may be additional costs. So I'm in, I'm adding another seventy-five thousand to cover that additional cost. That's all. If we don't use it, we don't, we're not gonna, if we don't need it, we won't use it. So we may have other fees, like for instance, we had to do advertisement.
It'll all be reimbursed.
It'll all be coming out of the assessment.
You won't pay, you as a taxpayer won't pay for it.
She's answering the question, but to, to my point is this, the first seventy-five thousand, the first seventy-five thousand, somebody had to come ask for.
This is the first, these are like the initial fees that we have so far. The only other fees that I have thus far is like when we had to advertise for it, that was about a thousand dollars. That will come out of this second seventy-five. That, because that was not budgeted.
Okay.
So that's, this is only to cover fees that we have not budgeted for this purpose because of course this purpose was not budgeted.
Okay.
Yes.
Also, I seen something coronavirus.
Oh, that's a.
That right there?
Yes.
It was, well, that, would that be refunded?
Well, no, that's already funded.
That's already funded?
Yes.
Do that, do that include the first go around of the coronavirus?
That is it.
With the fifty-seven thousand dollars that were paid out, did, did nobody know what happened to?
I'm not aware of the fifty-seven, however, this is that seven million, part of that seven million that we got.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Any other?
Sylvester Hall, I think the point is being made is anytime you come up and you need money, it should come before the panel here and not just pull it out in our reserve. Anytime you need extra money, it should be brought here and should be asked for and proper procedure. Not just in case I'm going to stick it aside and if I need it, that's not the way we're supposed to conduct business. So that's what we was looking at. So when money is being asked for, it needs to come before you. You don't just take it and put it aside and say, if I need it, I got it. If I don't, then you lose track of it. Then that's where we start talking about where all the money is going because we falling short here. And then when we start talking about forensic audits, everybody get clueless. So it's a simple process. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. If not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for motion to approve resolution twenty-two-four, excuse me, twenty-two-five dash oh-four.
Would it make sense? I mean, the, the residents are making valid points here. Would it make sense to, to not have that so that it builds transparency?
I mean, again, it's, it's how efficient do you want to be with this process?
And I understand that.
Yeah. And that's all it is. I mean, we can bring you a report of every expense because it got to be included in the assessment anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we got, we got a tracking number for it and it's got to be included.
Well, I understand that, but I think it's valid points that are being made that it just helps with transparency in residents. It helps to build confidence in our residents long-term.
Yeah.
So I think it's valuable.
Yeah. We can come back with a list of everything that we've expended. We put a contingency of about two hundred and ninety-six thousand. When I presented this to you before with the details of that three million dollars, we had a contingency of, of two hundred and ninety-six thousand. We're only looking at right now one hundred and fifty out of that.
I understand. I, I guess we just can't specifically state what the additional seventy-five thousand is for, which I get. It's, I understand your point, but I understand the residents' point as well and it's more their money than it is anybody else's. So.
Just trying to be prepared.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And I understand you're trying to build efficiencies too, but we're doing budget amendments every single week. So just add it to the next one then.
So, so if we don't approve this tonight, the addition of thirty-five thousand, does that slow down the process of getting this Emerson Park deal completed?
Basically what I'm doing, just like I had to cover a thousand. You know, I'm, I'm foregoing something else to cover expenses related to this. So that's why I said, let me put some money in here so we can cover those expenses. And I don't have to, you know, every little expense come back for a thousand dollars, come back for a two hundred dollars, come back for this. Because I don't know what those expenses are going to be. So I can come back. Exactly. So, you know, I don't want to hold up the process. We have a critical timeline. That was indicated thirty-three steps. So I don't want to hinder that process and get this done timely. So this is the only reason this seventy-five K could bring you a list when we're done. It's got to be factored anyway. The methodology consultant has got to come up here, gets, bring you the details of what's in there anyway, for the assessment amount.
So why don't we just do a, a ten thousand dollar addition right now? Because you're saying it's only two hundred dollars here, a thousand dollars here.
No, no, no. I just said, that's what I just did. I don't know what those expenses are going to be. What I said is we have a two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollar contingency. This is only a hundred and fifty thousand of that.
I understand. But we can't, the seventy-five, that additional seventy-five thousand, again, I think it just, all we're doing is just adding one small additional step here. This isn't going to delay in huge tangible ways. And it helps build confidence in our residents.
Cover it out of our budgets and, and then come back. And that's what is going to end up happening. We have to cover it out of the current budget, forego something else and then come back and, and true it up in the end.
But don't we have to do that either way?
Not if I put the money in the budget ahead of time. And that's what I'm trying to do.
Trying to do so you don't have to go back in a minute.
You're trying to put the money in the budget now.
To cover the, the expenses that we're going to incur.
So I, I explained that to me. So why can't I do this a month from now as well and be in the same scenario?
Because if I'm going to stick with the critical timeline, if we're trying to get it done within the timeline, I may, it may not be in the budget at that time, like the thousand dollars. I wasn't going to stop the advertisement that was required and I paid for it out of my budget.
Why wouldn't we have funds for this?
This is Emerson Park. This effort was not funded.
So.
In our budget.
What, what are we taking from right now then? To do this additional seventy-five thousand?
It's coming out of reserves.
Okay. So it's not taking from another project or another?
But if it's not in the budget, it is taken from. If I don't add this money, it would be taken from another.
So we could do like a budget reimbursement though to a department, to your department if needed.
Again, it could, like I said, it could slow down other priorities as a result of that.
Anyways, for the advertisement you just did.
That's a thousand dollars.
But we need to reimburse that, right?
Yes, it will come out of that seventy-five.
But I, I think essentially what she's saying is that she would have to come back or if there's something that is needed, she would have to come back, wait on council approval and will slow the process down. So she's trying to be efficient as possible.
It could potentially. I'm trying to be.
We're getting reimbursed for all of it anyway. It doesn't matter how you. And we'll have a, they'll, they'll want the, the, the Emerson Park people will want a full accounting as well. We, we, both sides will want full accounting. I don't.
You will have a full accounting of that additional seventy-five.
Yeah.
Yes. It's going to be in the assessment, all fees, everything, cost plus fees. So we are getting it back, as you said, with the assessment.
So we initially had approved two hundred and.
Now, the three minute, when the reimbursement resolution that you approved in the amount of three million dollars had a two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollar contingency there for like unknowns, fees and stuff. Yes.
So this one hundred and fifty.
Is a part of that.
Is part of that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. So I'm just trying to set aside some funds so that we can, you know, again, go through this process as quickly and seamless as possible. We are going to come back with an accounting of every dollar because it's a factor of the assessment.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, look for a motion to approve resolution twenty-two-five dash oh-four. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed?
No.
Four to one with Commissioner Nesta.
Thank you.
Opposition.
Thank you, Blanche.
Okay. Mr. Nesta, why don't you start us out on the city council reports?
Uh, start with maybe Vice Mayor.
I, I've asked you to do it, so go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not going to start right now. Thank you. You can come back to me.
No, we're, we'll wait till you're ready. So go ahead. When you're ready, let me know.
Oh, no, I'm not ready. I guess why do you need to keep starting with me every time?
I don't start with you every time.
I'm not going first, so. Whoever would like to start? Vice Mayor, feel free.
Mr. Chair, would it be okay if I start? Okay. I have a list of things here. So first is the, at the agenda review, I did ask our Chief Administrative if we had any updates on the homeless updates, any homeless updates, anything with next step? Are we having a community meeting?
Not. We just had a meeting, not last night. Monday night, Monday night. Nothing was really decided. We're, we're, so just nothing decided yet.
Right. Because I'm, I'm, you know, I've gotten email from the Apopka Voice where they're kind of asking for input. I don't know if any of the other commissioners have received.
I didn't receive any.
From the Apopka. I did. And I really can't answer some of the questions because we really haven't gotten any updates.
Correct.
As to how we're addressing the homeless situation in the city of Apopka. Are we going to be doing anything soon or workshop? Something that kind of get.
We can do a workshop if you'd like. We can do a workshop.
Well, I mean, I can say, yeah, let's do a workshop, but it needs to have some kind of direction as to, you know, what we as a city are planning to do. So there's something to consider. Um, because I know other cities are working on it. So maybe we can kind of touch upon other cities, tap upon other cities to see, you know, how are they kind of creating a program or how are they working with resources? Because I am getting, not just from the Apopka Voice, but you know, I have some residents that are asking us, you know, the other, last week, we had some cold nights, cold temperatures and, and I was, I was contacted and they asked, did we make any arrangements for our unhoused and homeless population? And I, I believe I did send you an email. And so that, that was a concern. So I just want to give you a heads up with that. Also, the Apopka Comprehensive Plan, again, the workshop, I have some residents that are asking for another workshop. And I also asked for another workshop because the one that we did have, we had some, we didn't have all the members of the Planning and Zoning Board. And I feel that it's important for them to be at the workshop and also have some contribution with that. We didn't do very well with the survey. And it's very important. It's sort of the document that's going to guide us for future growth and that. So I feel like we should have another workshop and to make sure that all the members, including the newest appointee, do be at the workshop regarding the Comprehensive Plan. Of course, the city charter, we didn't get to put it on at this council meeting. We did get the amendments that our attorney Cliff Shepherd did send us with the additional ones. We did get it Sunday night. So it didn't make it in time to go on to the, this agenda, but I'm asking, will it come on to the next one? Okay. Let me see what else. Well, you know, of course, we had the appointment of Chief Sanchez. So again, congratulations to Chief Sanchez. And okay, the, I know today I did send a, an email regarding the exodus of many of our senior employees. Right now, the latest that's going to be leaving us is our city engineer, Mr. Richard Earp. So there's a concern because we still are looking for our community development director, transportation, add to that list now, Mr. Richard Earp's position. So that's a concern. I did send an email regarding that and some other personnel in the city that have left our employment, but we have not replaced them. So there's a concern because again, Nick, Commissioner Nesta had brought up the overtime that's occurring in, in our city, and that's because we don't have enough staff and we aren't filling the positions as we should. And other than that, as we get ready for the Christmas holidays, I just want to remind our, our public to have a, a happy and healthy Merry Christmas. But also what I wanted to say is that our city is staffed with over almost about seven hundred employees. And we don't always see them, but I want them to know that they show up every day and they work to keep our city running. So it's very important that we recognize them and value them and say thank you to them for, for their service to our city and to wish each and every employee that works for the city, that works for our residents and works to keep our city moving forward. I want to wish, wish each one a Merry Christmas. And that's pretty much it for me right now.
Commissioner Nesta, you got it figured out yet?
Sure. Want to echo the same sentiment of have everyone have a safe holiday season. Happy New Year. Be safe, please. This is our last meeting of the year and then our next meeting won't be until January fifteenth?
Yes.
Right. So January fifteenth. So a little bit of a, about a month away. So just keep that in mind for everyone. This, tomorrow will be my last office hours of the year as well. Be here at City Hall from eleven AM to one PM. Look forward to seeing whoever would like to discuss any topics they would like in reference to the city, any good things, bad things, anything like that. That's what that time's for and it's been very successful. So I look forward to it and that'll be the last one of the year. Tomorrow, Thursday from eleven AM to one. I just want to reiterate and I appreciate the chief talking about the O C P S and the letter that was sent out, but I wanted to reiterate that the negotiations and what has gone on is not a commissioner-led initiative. It's not anything that we were consulted and asked for opinions and I'm not saying that that needed to happen, but that, that's not what has happened. So that's happening behind the scenes. Yes, we're getting updates here and there, but that's not with our input. So I just want to make sure that is very clear. And then to touch on what Commissioner Blaskas also referenced, the city charter was supposed to be on this week's agenda. Who moved that? Or why is it not on this agenda?
Because we didn't have the information back from the attorney.
And the attorney actually emailed and said that the county, you said the county did not get back.
County, county didn't respond. We'll let him, he'll address that under his report. How about that?
So shouldn't we, because we made a motion to put it on this agenda, shouldn't have properly been on this agenda and then tabled again? Wouldn't that have been proper?
Would it have been proper? Yes. I, 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 I don't know again, how you set up agendas. I don't know the specifics of it. I thought it was on, but I did send the stuff, I guess, was it Friday? I can't remember. Sunday? Okay.
Yeah.
And, and, and I also was hoping to hear back from the Supervisor of Elections Office, which we didn't, and I'll discuss that in my report. This is now the third time I've tried to get them to even respond to me with, without any luck. But if you would hear me and look to the report, I have some other things to add to this whole thing about the charter and particularly the new stuff.
Okay, understood. And, and I guess, and this kind of goes back to a holistic issue that we've ran into before is that we have meeting minutes that we approved again that have all of us unanimously voting for something to be on an agenda and then it's unilaterally taken off. So. So, I guess, is there recourse? How do we ensure that what we vote actually happens? And this is to Attorney Shepherd.
Um, the best I can tell you right now is I will need to get a briefing probably from. Uh, Mr. Smith and/or the mayor as to the procedures that are currently followed, cause I, I don't know. I'm not a part of the briefings that you all get. I don't know how things get on the agenda specifically, or who has the authority. Uh, in an ordinary course, and again, this is not. Apoca, but in the ordinary course of a strong mayor, the agenda is generally controlled through the mayor. But by request that are made through these public meetings, or alternatively through a city administrator. I want this on the agenda and it gets on the agenda. And frankly, we don't have these issues in, in the other city that I represent where. Agendas are, are, are the problem, so I don't know, but I can give you a full answer. I just need to get, do my research before I do that.
I- if you can, I appreciate that. Please do some due diligence, just so that I understand and our, the rest of the council understands, what we vote on. Does it matter? Is it just up in the air? Is it, it's pick and choose what applies and what doesn't, what votes apply and what votes don't apply, so. I think that's very important moving forward, so that the residents, when they tell us something.
I understand.
And we vote for it, does it mean something or does it not? So, um, I think that's very important, and, and it's my understanding now that this will be on the next agenda. Is that correct?
Yes.
So January fifteenth, it'll be on that agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, that's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
I did attend the, uh, employees' Christmas party, and it was great to, uh, see all the employees there and. And, uh, noticed they are, have a great camaraderie with one another, and so that was a great opportunity to do that. Probably wouldn't be a bad idea if we did it more often. To, to have that kind of activity. I also attended the Florida League of Cities Legislative Session, was held at the Hilton Orlando. And the committee that was a part of, uh, they're gonna take a, uh. Policy statement, uh, to Tallahassee, uh, addressing for, for the housing. Uh, because we're concerned about the, the local id- and impact that it has on, on our citizens. And then the other thing that we're going to address is gonna be impact fees. That the impact fees are not enough to cover the cost of infrastructure and keep it up with the growth of the cities. And so those are the two items that they committed that I was a part of. We'll be addressing when we go to Tallahassee.
Good. Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Anderson?
So, uh, to, I just kinda wanna just clear some things up in regards to Chief McKinley with us, with the council in regards to our input. I know for, for me, uh, Chief McKinley has definitely came to me and asked for my input. And although we're not involved with the negotiations, he has asked for our input, and at that time, we could've gave our input, so. I, I, I think it's just unfair, um, to Chief McKinley. To make it appear to the public that he has not asked for our input, have not been in, having us involved and updated with everything, uh. Primarily, you know, we don't negotiate the contracts. That's kinda what we hired the chief to do, is to negotiate the contracts, and he has definitely asked for our input. Along with every step of the way, so I just wanna make it clear to the public that although we are not involved in the negotiations. Um, our chief has definitely have kept the council updated on what's going on. At that time, we could've expressed what of our concerns are, asked additional questions. Um, about the contract, so I just kinda wanna just put it out there because I think it's really unfair to corner the, the chief like that. In addition to that, um, happy, um, holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. I wish everyone, um, have a blessed, um, holiday season. Um, spend time with your family, your loved ones, and, um, that's actually all I have. Thank you.
Cool, alright. Jacob?
Okay, just a few things. Uh, first, I wanted to, uh, say that I'm, I'm elated. That we have Chief Sanchez here with us, and now I can call him that, Chief Sanchez. The time that he has been the interim, I, I wanted to point out a few things that he's done during this, this short period of being the interim. Um, remember, uh, we did have two hurricanes. He was our interim chief during that time. Uh, he also helped out with the resolution and the implementation of, of the union negotiations. Uh, recently, and no small task, he's been working on the I S O recertification, which happens, what, every five years? Yeah, so that, that's been a project that he's been working on as well. And, and also right now and into the future, he's been working with the Jangle Group. Uh, developing, of course, safety plans, and right now coming up with a, a strategic plan, so. Quite a bit done as an interim. Fire chief, so definitely it earned the job. Now, on the other end, we have, uh, we have to say goodbye to, uh, our city engineer, Richard Earp, and I wanna recognize him publicly. Cause, uh, he's done some tremendous work. Uh, he's been a little bit overloaded due to some vacancies that we've had here in the past year or so. It, it's sad to see him go, but we know that he's, uh, he's moving on to a dream job. So, yeah, so congratulations to him. And, um, just, just kind of a unique perspective for all of you, cause you probably all have either. Never had it, or have forgotten. My first impression of the holidays here in Apoca. Uh, first of all, I'm amazed at the, the service that I've seen volunteer. Both from staff as well as the commission and mayor. Uh, with all of the festivities, festivities that have been going on, it's been very busy, which was great. It seems, it seems like we had a Christmas thing going on almost every single day, every night, some, sometimes two or three times, and that was great to see. Uh, the other thing is, is the generosity. I've seen a lot of donations that have been given to some of the kids as well as the shop with the cop. That was a, that was a fun thing to go and see how they did that. I know Commissioner Blazek, as you were there as well, when I was there, and that, that was, it was great to see the, the smiles on those kids' faces as. They realizing they were going to have presents for Christmas. And then, and then again, of course, just the general spirit of the holiday. I've, I've enjoyed it, and that's my first impression of Apoca, so. So thank you all of you for that. That, that's all I have.
Cool. Alright, Mr. Shepherd?
Alright, um, the first thing I think I need to say is, uh, I, if I owe you an apology, which I may well, I don't, I. I did not know I missed that some sort of a deadline for the agenda. I'm, the only deadlines I'm aware of when it comes to agenda are advertising ones, and I assume that this was otherwise advertised because nothing would needed. Would have needed to be changed, the title of the ordinance and so forth. So if I did that, I apologize, and I'll try to make sure that between Susan and I, I know if I've got a deadline to meet. I thought by Sunday. You would have three days before the meeting to read everything, so you'd understand it, and we could talk about it.
To, to, well, me, to that, Cliff, I, you know, one of the things when I came in, there were times they would put stuff on the agenda Monday and Tuesday, and, and I made a commitment that. By five o'clock on Friday.
Okay.
N- n- not for you, but I, I just, my, my commitment to the community is that everybody would have the weekend plus, you know, Monday and Tuesday to look at, so.
I appreciate that. I won't make that mistake again.
I'll take, I'll take the credit.
I won't make that mistake again. The second thing is, when I put these things together, and you'll recall the email from which they came. They were more ideas than they were, um, meat on the bones kinds of things. And so specifically with the term limits one, you will probably wonder where, okay, well, why did he do that, or why did he do this? And I have reasons for all of that, um, which I'm happy to discuss. I suggest that, um, it be put on an agenda, perhaps the next one, but with the idea that we, y'all may wanna take some time with it. Give you an example of what I'm talking about. You'll see if you have read it, and maybe you haven't, um, that I said, after your term limited. You would set out for a full term, i.e. four years, based on what the current terms are. Why did I pick that? I didn't pick it out of the air. I picked it because based on other cities, they wanted some period of time. Once official is term limited, between the time that they are term limited and the time they can rerun for office. Other cities have said a full year. Still, other cities have said a full term. I assumed, but don't know, and I don't care, whether you do a full year or a full term, or no time at all, that's up to you all to decide. But usually, if you're term limited, unless you mean forever, which is also a possibility. There's a time limit on how long you're out of office. That's the feedback I would need to get it in there. The reason I picked years, for example, instead of a full term, is because it gets into real craziness, as I've already learned in one of my other cities. When you have a qualifying period that starts before the term limited time, or the term where you're excluded from running. Uh, has not expired, but you would enter office after that time has expired. And so I'm trying to cover that angle. But if you don't wanna cover it, again, this was me projecting what you might want. If I'm wrong, that's okay. But that's the kinda stuff I'll need to know, and, and I had to kinda pull it out of the air as a guess, and if it's a wrong guess, that's a wrong guess. I just, I couldn't just draft nothing and bring it back to you, so that's why that's there, and that's the kinda stuff that you may say, you know, maybe we should workshop it. Because I'll remind you, we asked, we, to you specifically about term limits during the charter review, and nobody wanted. Nobody. So it's not like it didn't come up, it's not, it wasn't discussed, it was, yeah, we'll, we'll pass on that. So we didn't have the detailed discussion that would include things like, okay, for how long? Um, are we term limited forever? Is it a year? Is it a full term? Is it two? All those kinda things, so that's why I had to project that issue. And finally, on this issue, and I, I really don't know why, um, you'll note, if you've seen the emails I've sent, I've copied them each time. To, uh, Mr. Heinz, because notwithstanding that there's a new incoming supervisor. And she hasn't yet taken office, and an outgoing supervisor who is, has other things going on. Um, I thought that Mr. Heinz, at minimum, would be able to respond, since he is the one who actually committed to send someone here to talk to you. But I haven't been able to get a response, so I'll continue to be optimistic as I can. I sent another email, copied you all today. Um, saying, hey, uh, is anybody gonna respond, or something like that? Um, and if I get a response, you will be the first to know, but I still don't have anybody here to talk to you about November versus March or some other date. What I'm going to suggest is if we go through this whole period and I still don't get a response. At, and, and we go through the second reading the next time with the intention of going forward with whatever's gonna go on the ballot. I'm going to suggest to you, at the, the absence of them coming to defend the position that you can't be in November, if you wanna be in November. Go with November, because they're not here to tell you why not, and I don't have a good answer for that.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Cliff. Alright, um, Mayor's Report, um, couple things, the, uh. Raise Grant Public Input Meeting will be January thirteenth, uh, right here in the, uh, city council chamber, so five thirty. So the, for the Raise Grant, which is the Apoca COE, um, improvements, so. Uh, we really need some input, you know, we're trying to, you know, raise our score so that we can get the funding to, to help improve. Probably, uh, you know, a very needed, um, stretch of roadway.
What's that date again?
It's, uh, January thirteenth at five thirty here in the city council chambers.
And that was required to public meetings?
Yes.
And that would be public meeting number two?
Yes.
Uh, do you know if that went live at last workshop? He said it was gonna go live where public could go in and give their input.
I think it did.
I'm pretty sure, Rob, do you know if? Uh, do you know if, if it went live, the, uh, the?
Survey.
Survey? If I go COE? Okay, we'll, we'll get you an email tomorrow.
Yeah, he said it was gonna go live.
Yeah, yeah, I, I would say. Oh, the fifteenth of this month, okay, okay, alright. It is live, okay, good. So if you wanna go on the website and, and fill out, that would be, that'd be awesome. Um, next up, the, down at Hurricanes, we're gonna have the New Year's Eve drop, ball drop, so come on out, uh, December thirty-first. From eight PM till whenever you wanna go home, uh, at Hurricanes, um. Uh, last, my last thing is, I, I just want a big shout out. I know that, uh, Jacob brought up the, uh. Talking about the city employees and, and what they've done through the holiday season, and I wish you could've been in my office, um, last week. When, uh, all the toys that had been donated from city employees, toys and, and games, and. We have one department, I just need to, I especially gotta, you know, tell you, the wastewater guys down, um. Down at Public Services donated five bikes, just the one small department, um. And it was really kinda neat, when we took all those, all the, uh, the, the bikes and all the, the toys down to Apocan Memorial Middle School. They were just over the moon as to, you know, what, what the city of Apoca employees did to, to make their Christmas. A, a much better Christmas, so thank, hats off to anybody from the city who, who donated to the toy drive. I mean, they've done it at, at, you know, at, uh, Thanksgiving, you know, we, we're, our goal was three hundred boxes of stuffing, and we went to like. Four or five hundred boxes, so we do have a very giving, um, uh, city staff and, and to be commended for. You know, not only, you know, taking care of, you know, the city, but also taking care of those that are in need, so. Thank you for, um, for what you do for the city.
And with that, Mayor, you turn off the live feed again?
Yes. Okay.